Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Liz Lempert. I'm the mayor here in Princeton. And it's just great to see this room filled with people. I thought that the room was going to be filled, but you never know. And it just shows that this community is committed to this program. I'm personally committed to this program. There's several members of council here. And I can tell you, the whole council is committed to this program. And I know you all. How many people have been in the program? Great. Excellent. So what's going to happen tonight? I want to introduce the staff that's here. Bob Huff, who's the Director of Infrastructure and Operations. Jeffrey Grocer, who's Assistant Administrator and also our Health Officer. And Matt Wasserman, who was Project Manager, what was your title? When we had the Bloomberg project and is also a Sustainable Princeton. So I'm going to turn it over to them in a minute. But really, the point of tonight is to get feedback from you all in terms of what's important to you for the program. This is an opportunity for us to take a step back because, in all honesty, not everything was working 100% as it should have with the old program. So we have a chance to have a clean start. And before we start up again, we have a lot of questions. There's a lot of different options. There's ways we can maybe change the program. And we want to hear from you about what's important. What are things that are important to keep? What are things that we might want to think about changing? So we're going to hear a presentation. We're going to have some breakout sessions where people will have a chance to go around the room and give their input on different aspects of the program. Before you leave tonight, we're asking everybody if you can sign in. And Jeff has a yellow pad. We're just asking for everybody to put their name down and their email address so we can keep track of everybody who is here tonight. And again, it's really great to see a big crowd. And I think we're going to need your input to make sure that we're going to get off on a good foot when this starts up again. So with that, I'll turn it over to... Who am I turning it over to? To Matt? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So thanks, everyone, for coming. As Liz said, I'm Matt Wasserman. I am President of the Board of Sustainable Princeton and was fortunate enough to work on the Bloomberg project here with the town as when we were trying to figure out what to do with food waste. Tonight, we've got a pretty packed agenda. We're going to go through a little bit of the background. We've got a couple of folks here from the New Jersey Compost Council. The U.S. Compost Council has a state chapter that's newly formed. And so we wanted to bring some folks in here who can maybe give some perspective on what's happening statewide, what's happening countrywide, just to give us a feel for, are we alone in all of this? Do we have friends, folks going through the same kind of pain that we are? We'll have a little bit of a breakout session, a little brainstorming. You'll see some things, some paper on the walls. Kind of give you guys an opportunity to give us some ideas. We'll come back. We'll do some Q and A, you know, in this format. And then just wrap it up with some next steps and some activity outcome. So with that, in terms of what we wanted to accomplish tonight, really, it's important to get your feedback. It's been great to see some of the suggestions on Facebook and on emails. Clearly, there's a lot of great ideas out there, but we wanted to be able to do it in a kind of more controlled forum. We're going to brainstorm some solutions and going to answer your questions as best we can. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Bob to kind of give you a little bit of why we're here or how we got here.
This works.
That works? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, my name's Bob Huff. I'm the Director, Department of Infrastructure and Operations. And within that is Public Works, Sewer, Trash, Recycling, and the Organic Composting Program. And one of the things that I wanted to review tonight was some of the issues that we've had probably over the last, different issues over the last six to 18 months of the program and things that we've been thinking about, things that came out during the Bloomberg study in particular that sort of concerned and, in some cases, alarmed us a little bit. And then, as Matt said, as we go through the evening, we'll have the breakout sessions and hopefully get some thoughts and feedback from everybody concerning the program. I know over the last few months, or over the last year, there were a number of collection issues. When you realize that the trash in this municipality gets picked up, spread over four days, there's people that get picked up Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday. And we were doing the organic program, the entire municipality, on one day, Wednesday. While it was not everybody, we still, the vendor was still driving basically every street in the municipality, 125 miles of road in one day, when we were doing that for trash in four days. We knew that was a problem, or it became a problem. We can debate why, but the bottom line is, we do know that was an issue. And it's something, as we move forward with the program, we have to think about. Should we divide the community into, backed into the four sections? Should we just divide it in half? You know, possibly pick Witherspoon. Everybody on one side of Witherspoon on one day, everybody on the other side of Witherspoon another day. So those are things that we are looking at and thinking about. But we know that that became a problem. One of the other problems that came about was the hauler, Central Jersey or Solterra, same people. They were having trouble finding a stable home for the material. They were taking it out to several different farms in Pennsylvania. And there were a couple of issues that they were having. One was the, some of the farms were becoming full at times. They were not taking our material. They just didn't need any more material. Didn't matter where it was from. There were, the other issue was that it was contaminated. They were running into contamination issues. And particularly over the summer during the Bloomberg study, we began to learn more and more about the contamination issues, what they were facing, what was happening. And as a result, we were finding out that many times, many Wednesdays or many weeks, our load, and not just our load, I actually ended up finding out it was also the load from Lawrence, our neighbor that also does this program. The loads were, ended up being incinerated. So in the mind of the Mercer County Waste Plan, that was acceptable because it wasn't going into a landfill. But it wasn't acceptable to us because that's not what the plan was. The plan was for this material to be put to a beneficial use, not to be incinerated. So we know that there's an issue with contamination. It's something that, when we do the breakout sessions tonight, something to talk about. During the Bloomberg study, during the summer, we were getting containers that had recycling in them. We were finding out that we were getting regular trash. We were getting walk-by trash. You put your container out, you leave for work, and your neighbors, your local high school kids, elementary school kids, somebody walking a dog, whatever, came by and saw your green, black, whatever, container. And they didn't really care that you had it out there for compost. They used it as a garbage can. So that was becoming an issue. And there was a little bit of a study. We had a number of people who used bungee cords on their containers to keep them closed. We found out that that eliminated some of the waste that was going in them. Other cans where it wasn't, people were still going by and opening them. So it was an interesting issue that we became more and more aware of. We also had a number of soccer balls. He's a soccer fan. So, yeah, it wasn't him. But, I mean, that's the type of stuff we were finding. We have pictures of soccer balls in the containers, you know, and in the waste that was going out to the farms. So, and it was also becoming more and more costly because the farms were turning around. And when they were separating that material out, it had to go somewhere. And it was going in a dumpster that then the vendor or somebody had to go back out into the middle of Pennsylvania and pick up and bring back because he wasn't in the business of getting rid of trash. So there's a lot of components that we're looking at with regard to the contamination. The other issue at the, this year is, it was that the contract was expiring or ending for the current, the current contract. We went out to bid for new prices, which we had to do as a municipality. We had to go out and bid the program. And as you may know, the current price or the price that we had from the hauler was, he charged us $15 per month, per resident, per property, per container. The new bids that came in, unfortunately, one of the bids we had to throw out. It was a low bid. We had a reasonable price. It was $18. Unfortunately, they were noncompliant with the contract documents. But the current hauler, his price went from $15 to $34 per resident, per container, mainly because of the problems he was having getting rid of the material and the additional transportation costs that he was incurring, et cetera. So when we were looking at the pricing, and again, something we want to talk about tonight, as you know, the program was $65 per year that was being charged, that you were being asked to contribute towards it. The municipality was picking up the balance of that, of the amount of yearly costs that we had to pay out to pay the contractor. But if you took the $34 that he was going to charge or wanted to charge for 2019 and pass that entire cost on to the property owners, that new number was $408 per person for a year. It's a rather large jump from 65 to $408. As you, as you were a township participant prior to consolidation, I believe when the program first started, it was like $228, $225 per person to be in it. And then after the consolidation, when it was rebid, there was a, the number was $65 that the municipality did as the registration fee, with the rest of it being picked up by and subsidized by the municipality. So one of the things we've looked at is, if the municipality continues to subsidize, even at their current level, it still would cost each resident close to $300 to participate. So it's a significant jump. Again, if the municipality held the line and said, okay, what we've been doing in the past is what we're going to stick with, then you're looking at close to $300 as far as a contribution, a contribution, a registration fee. So again, it's just different things that we want to speak about tonight and get some input on and tell you why, some of the reasons we, at my recommendation, along with the administrator and, you know, the mayor, we all got together and many, 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 many meetings to come to the conclusion that the best thing to do right now was to temporarily suspend the program and take a step back and look at what our various options are. One of our options may even be to do it in-house, for us to collect it. The only problem is, now, we have to find the home in which to take it. And we are starting to, we're trying to make some contacts locally, but it's a large volume. A local farm's not going to, not going to be able to take all of our materials. So there's a lot of things. We're talking to the state. We're trying to figure out the best way for us to reinvent ourselves and come back, hopefully, with a better and a stronger program. I do, I mentioned Lawrence before. I do want to give you one example with Lawrence, who is, as I say, our neighbor and does this program. As of December 1st, they went out to bid also. They needed new bids for the program for 2019. Solterra is also their vendor, was and still is. They did win their bid. They jumped, their price in Lawrence was $18 per person. Theirs is now $38.50. So that translates into roughly $460 a year. And the way they do it is a complete pass-on. There's no subsidy in Lawrence Township from the township. You contract directly with Central Jersey in Lawrence and pay them directly the $480 for the program, or $460, and everything goes directly through them. So it's a little bit different program. They have currently, they used to have 200 participants. Right now, they are around 100, 110 participants, and they're struggling to get back to 125, which is what the contractor has told them he wants to do in order to continue the program throughout the entire year. What they end up doing, I don't know. Doesn't really concern me, but it's my comparison or a comparison to give to you what a neighboring community is doing. We are currently, this, when this year, we were roughly around 800, 800, 850 people. We've been as high as a shade over 1,000. We would, you know, like to get back to that. One of the other components of this is, does this program become mandatory throughout the municipality? And how does that tie into our trash and recycling? As many of you may know, recycling, you can read, it's everything in the paper, recycling costs have greatly increased. The municipality for this coming year, our recycling costs with the county, that is done through the county, again, picked up by Solterra. They happen to have the low bid with the county. But we went from $220,000, $220,000. We're going to pay close to $300,000 this year in recycling costs, the municipality. That's a significant increase in the cost of recycling. They can't get rid of it. I mean, you read about China and all these other countries that used to take this stuff. Nobody takes it. So it's becoming an issue. We've looked at it, whether or not it's, how we should go about it. Should we do something differently? And it all ties in. This is the final year of the trash contract. This is the fifth and final year of our currently bid trash contract. So the Public Works Committee, which a couple of members of that committee are here tonight, that's one of their major, the major goals, the major tasks that we have in the next two to three months, is determine what we should be doing with trash. Should it be, how should it be incorporated? Should it be pay-as-you-go? Should it be, do we just go back out to bid? We know our price is going to come in a lot higher. Currently, you know, I can realize these are all numbers, but we're about $80 a ton right now. If we went out on the street today to rebid that, my guess, it's going to go up well over 90, close to $100 a ton to get rid of our trash. So it's a very, garbage, recycling, and organics. Unfortunately, it's very, it's a very real problem. What you read in the paper is very real. The council and the various committees, finance and Public Works are dealing with it. What do we do? What do we, how do we get our best service and at what cost to everybody? So it's a, it's a real problem we're facing. Obviously, tonight, we're here to discuss the organics. But that's sort of a little bit of where we are, why we're sitting here tonight. And it's, it is very nice to see such a full, a full house of people who are interested. And hopefully, we can get some thoughts and ideas from you, the consumer, the user. You know, it's one thing, we have to run the program and implement it. We're not, we're not necessarily on the other end. So we need to hear some input and your thoughts on what we can do to make this better. So Matt?
All right. So I was going to tell you about what we're going to do next, but... Oh, okay. I was going to talk a little about what we're, what we're trying to do about it, but Bob so nicely went through most of these for us. So we're a little ahead, a little ahead of things. But let me just see, a show of hands. How many people here did not know that Princeton was taking part in a project with Bloomberg over the summer? Anyone not know? Okay. So maybe about 25% of the people. All right, just trying to, we're trying to gauge how well our communication went, you know, over the course of the year. So, or over the course of that project. Where we were working with Bloomberg Philanthropies to try to figure out some of the behavior issues that goes along with a separating of trash. So that's, you know, that's one of the things that we've been, you know, been working on. You heard about some of the issues from Bob. We've been researching other cities. Encinitas does a, between them, Boulder and Atlanta, one of them, it's run by a nonprofit. One of them is a, you pay 50, you pay $30 to $50 a month for someone to come to your house, pick up a five-gallon bucket and take it away for you and give you a clean bucket. So some cities do that. Some cities do a, you take your five-gallon bucket, you take it to a central site, you dump it, you bring it home, and you pay a monthly fee for that. So there's lots of different models out there. But we're looking at, you know, looking at those as well to figure out, you know, what's, what might be, what are some of our options? We've got, we've been talking to the DEP. We, NJCC is here, will be up here in a moment, talking as well. And then we're just kind of also exploring options in terms of, no one here, I am sure no one here wants to spend $400 to do what they think is environmentally the right thing to do and get rid of their, get rid of their food waste in a sustainable way. So what kind of partnerships can we create? Either with nonprofits, with private equity, with, you know, other institutions, with the university, looking at this holistically. Let's not just look at how much it costs to manage our food waste, how much it costs to manage everything we send to the curb? And is there a different way to kind of, to divide that money up? And what are some of the cost and income levers that we can pull? And just so folks know, we have engaged CFAC. So we have engaged the Finance Committee to run some numbers for us. And we will, we will use them in the future as some of these, you know, options get vetted out. Because clearly, we want to make sure that whatever we do feels financially sound as well. And then, of course, kind of tonight, this Town Hall meeting to get everybody's, to get everybody's point of view. So speaking of points of view, I'd like to now call up some members of the New Jersey Compost Council. We've got Jairo Gonzalez, who's the president. And I don't know if Isaac, you know, who I've been talking with up until now, will have, will be coming up as well. But I can see Jairo back there. And I hope I'm not putting you on the spot. I hope Isaac told you that you'd come up and say a few words. But come on up. Yeah, come on up. And just love to hear your perspective on what NJCC is doing and kind of where we fit into all of this.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jairo, and I'm an organics recycler. I've been recycling organics and food waste for over 20 years. First from my house, and then my farm, and then here in New Jersey. I arrived about a year ago, and we started to look at providing composting solutions, particularly in the area of food waste. Because when you talk about organics, be sure you differentiate. Organics is, can be anything, anything that lives, animal, farming, vegetation. But food waste is a particular item which we all live every day. So I came across something very interesting in New Jersey, that this is a backward state in that area. We have a lot to learn about. For some reason, the stigmas, there is this myths about organics and its smells, that it produces bugs, that it doesn't, that it's waste, or, as they call it, garbage. I don't use that word anymore. This, we're talking about waste. We're talking about waste diversion, right? So you're going to utilize your waste and create other type of material, which is the idea of sustainability. So I came across the United States Composting Council, which is a 2,000-member strong nationwide and the only composting association in North America that can provide me and the organization with the necessary resources of case studies, financial information. And a lot of the things that I see are happening here have already happened. But they've lived it, California, south, east, everybody. So New Jersey is kind of like, we are starting, and you guys are piloting this stuff. There isn't too many food waste activities out there, particularly on the processing side. Processing means a composting facility where you create compost, either from vegetation, which everybody has in every city. I believe you guys have a vegetation-type compost. Do you? Leaves and, yeah, so everybody has that. That is organics. Because if you get there sometime in the year, it smells, you know, if they're not turning it properly and so forth, if they're not using best practices and so forth. And best practices are all part of this issue, which I read, which is the contamination. Anyway, so we created the New Jersey Composting Council, which is here to promote composting of organics as well as with food waste. And the most important thing is that you have to have legislation. That's been the number-one problem in New Jersey, that legislation is not only orthodox, but it's limiting the amount of facilities that can come up and provide the services that your city wants to provide you so that you can have a sustainable activity with your waste, with your food scraps, in this case, food, food waste. So we are working with Trenton, trying to develop the proper language and the legislation that's been backwards. Because it was, New Jersey at some point did have some facilities, and these facilities had some issues related to bad best practices usage, and they had to be shut down. Neighbors smell this stuff. Neighbors don't like it around them. People, if you're not running the proper balance of the food waste, it can get bad. Anyway, so we created the organization so that we can participate in activities like this. But most importantly, support the industry so that they come to New Jersey and you don't have to haul your waste, or in this case, food waste. And I saw up there that one of your main problems is that your hauler could not find a facility. Because why? There isn't. New Jersey has maybe one facility up north, and another facility, and another boutique facility, and another small facility. But these facilities are specifically oriented to their markets, and they're not available. The big guys are not yet in New Jersey. Because to set up a composting facility in New Jersey, it costs too much money. These fees that you're talking about, the $10, the $69 that you guys were paying, when I read that, I thought that was funny. Because really, this, that's not a reality. That's not a reality for the city. It's not a reality for you. It's not a reality what we see throughout the country. The fees are a lot higher than that to process a sustainable food waste program. Anyway, our mission is to create these environments and to change or to adjust the law so that we can work with the NGDP, which is a, basically, an enforcement agency. They don't create the law. They don't create the pattern. They just enforce whatever comes down from the legislation. But the municipalities play a major role. We are working with municipalities across the nation so that municipalities can tell the NGDP what they want to do and get some exemptions. There are facilities that are starting to be reviewed, which we are participating in drafting the language so that they can become exempt. A leaf and a grass clippings or a yard vegetation-only facilities is naturally the right location to take your food waste because they already are processing organics. They're not processing food, but they're processing organics or vegetation, which has the same chemical, volatile, organic material growth throughout the period that is being put in these windows and so forth. So we have some activity in the NGDP as they move along slowly in this world of food scraps and food waste so that they can adapt and create exemptions within your facilities. Because the idea is that you do your own composting locally so that you can also use that material, which is called compost, grade A or grade B, or just soil amendment or soil rehabilitator, or whatever it is you're producing with that particular feedstock, in this case, food scraps, that is a composite you can then use for your yard. And they call it the circular economy. Anybody heard about the circular economy theories? That is all about. You take your, your resources from your town, your waste resources, and you create life from it. We say, don't throw the food away because you're creating more food with the waste that you produce. So there are a lot of things that are happening here which are very typical. So don't feel bad because what I hear and I've read, and very briefly, because we were driving down and I was being briefed, I was in Phoenix last week at the Compost 2019 Conference with everybody around the nation. And what I heard is similar cases of what you're going through. You're going through the pains of contaminating your bags. That is the first process of any exercise around community or municipality composting. Everybody has to understand that when you grab that banana peel, when you grab that apple, you have to chop it. You have to put it in a container. And make sure the fork or the knife doesn't go or fall, or soccer ball, as I heard. All these issues have to be carefully managed, but from the source. And you guys are the source. So it is very normal and very typical. Because the hauler just takes it. You seen these guys? They just toss it in the bag. But when they get to the facility, subject to the type of facility, you have digestors like the one we inaugurated here last month at the Princeton University. We did a blue ribbon cutting of their new digester facility next to the astrology department. Anybody see that? Did you read about it? Yeah, it was fantastic. But that facility is even more scrutinized towards contaminants. It has to receive the material very carefully. And those operators, compost operators, like I am, I am a certified compost operator from the state of New Jersey, they have to be very careful. If the source, which is you guys, and in that case, the restaurant, it is not properly sourced, this machine will jam. And when it jams, it starts piling up and the whole thing just breaks down. So one of the most important things when we, when we go into locations, either as an organics recycler or as a NJCC, I always tell them that the first issue is the culture. You must educate everybody step by step on how to do them. And then sometimes you have to stop. You have to stop like you've done today so that you can go back and re-educate. Maybe the bins are not the proper ones. Maybe the bags and the bins are not being very suitable, whatever it is. But if the source is providing contaminants, your hauler will get fined, your processor who's doing the composting will jam, and then the whole machine breaks down. So those are simple things. But then you come to the process of your decisions, the cost. I just want to emphasize that most pickup services in New Jersey who are trucking their food waste outside the state, which is what most of the people are doing, Jersey City, many towns who have these pickup services, either by Javas Compost or Community Service, some of our members aren't here, they're all trucking to Pennsylvania or to New York City or to New York State. And they are paying about $50 a month for this service, plus the startup kit. Maybe the city will provide you with that five-gallon or four-gallon at the beginning. Maybe the bins will be provided as well. But it's about $50 a month to have the proper service to divert your... But it's about $50 a month to have the proper service to divert your food waste from the landfill or from the incinerator. We don't want to see either one. Nobody wants to incinerate, because what happens when you incinerate? You're burning food and you're contaminating in the air. And when it goes into the landfill, you're creating more methane and blah, 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 blah. So you want to divert it into a site, but to do that, I think cost is something very important. It has to be analyzed. But at the same time, there are opportunities, as everybody heard about tipping fees. There is, the way the city is, or the municipality works with the local landfill, with the designated landfill, where the, all the part of the waste goes, they are paying tipping fees. There are also grants. There's also the tonnage grant available, which we also help cities like West Orange or South Orange. So there are a lot of applications, but that's a particular conversation and it's very boring. Trust me, when you get down to sitting down with waste management and analyzing the millions of dollars that they're paying today to the landfill and the haulers, it's something that is to be looking carefully. Then the grants that come into place. So that's one exercise that I would recommend, and that I've seen other places, to sit back and evaluate your financial proposition. And again, we're doing good from other earth. At the end of the day, we are environmentalists, but we're also businessmen. You have to take in consideration that a 36 or a 69 or 200, it's not going to work, unless there is a partner, either a city or a grant, to somebody to subsidize your program. So I don't, I don't, I'm not here to provide solutions, but if you want to sign up, we have a lot of information for activities, either for your backyard or best practices and so forth. We will have a leaflet here for you to sign up and we can provide you information through our website and so forth. And then later we can, you know.
Yeah, you can head to second round for the Q and A.
Great. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that. All right, so now that you've heard that, now that you've heard everything Bob and, you know, has talked about, I'm sure you've got a lot of ideas. So what we want to do is kind of break up into three different groups. What we'll do is for about seven to 10 minutes in each group and you're just going to kind of stand up and you'll, you'll start at a, you know, pick a group. And after about seven or 10 minutes, we'll just tell you to rotate. But there'll be two different people, there'll be two people at each station. I'll be at one. Molly Jones from San Diego Princeton, Christine Simmington from San Diego Princeton will be at one. And council members, I think, Nider Gang, Cohen and Quinn will be there as well to, to answer questions or to, to help facilitate the, the discussion. So the three different areas, just so you know what you're kind of walking into. One is kind of ideas about the process. So when you think about, I've got this food waste in my house, what am I doing with it? I am, you know, whatever you do with it, taking it to, you know, bring it out to the curb, it eventually goes somewhere else. And then it eventually becomes something, whether it be compost or energy. That process itself, what kind of ideas do you have about that? Do you care whether the digester is local or not? Do you care whether you have to, it gets picked up or dropped off? Just, you know, some of those, some of those ideas. Ideas about behavior. We heard a lot about contamination and behavior and, and how it has to start in your home. If you've got thoughts about that, how do you change people's behavior? Does making mandatory help? Does, does enforcement help? Those types of things. And then ideas about the financial aspects. Again, going back to, are we going to spend 50 to 60 bucks a month, you know, per household to do this? Would hopefully not have to do that. And if not, how do we make it affordable for the town? Costs, you know, is there an income side of this, funding through partnerships, et cetera? So again, about seven to 10 minutes at each station. I'll just say, okay, rotate, and you'll rotate to the next one. I'm not going to have people pick numbers, just, you know, just find your way to one of the three areas. And, you know, in about a half an hour, we'll come back to sit down. We'll kind of talk a little bit about what, what's up there, as well as do a Q and A session for about 20 or 30 minutes. All right? Thank you. If you're on the livestream, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do about that.
Because it was one of the programs, and even with doing it, we were close to it. Little tiny researches that ended up getting thrown in the bins, did not materialize to what they are called, standards, or what we were. One of our problems is just that, the early part of this is not families. Families can generate a higher volume. Best practices, elderly people, people over 65, who want to do the right thing.
The green bins, the green bins, no, that's one of the ones. The green bin belongs to the municipality and the theory that it's profitable, which we've heard it. So what we have talked about is that if we don't restart, if you want to get the bin, the truck will operate using it as our own bin. If they say come get it, then we can come get it through the stockpile and let it sell somewhere. It's eBay. It's like, you know, an interesting thought, they sold all the bins and they used the bins for the guy who did it because they, finally, for six years, they finally got conditioned not to keep those bins up, which we obviously, it's a big deal to say. But what we have told, if you decide you're willing to use that bin, put a big sign on it, put some trash, so that they know that those trash, you know, because it's still not sustainable. For example, tag on it, it's in the attic. Have you seen the other thing else?
It's a bin. Some do. You see them drive, or you're not, you see them drive, or you're not doing anything. They're just like, they're just like, they're all there.
We are going to get back together again and do some Q and A and talk about some next steps. So if you could make your way back to your seats, that would be great. We will leave the, we'll leave the paper on the walls so that if you want to add to them later, you can do that as well. Thank you. And there is a sign up sheet going around, so if you haven't signed it, please do. We'll actually, we'll put it on the. is we're gonna spend two minutes here, just kind of giving you a real quick download of some of the, some of the things that were, that were mentioned, then we'll get into some, some good Q and A. Because I, because not everyone is, because I'm sure some of what you're going to hear is going to be, is going to help generate some questions. So on the financial side, there are some interesting thoughts about, you know, how do we best use the, some of the money that's currently used for landfill and divert it, no pun intended, to spending money on the compost side. Some of that is already happening. That's why the, the town is, is spending some money, but you know, can we look at the whole thing holistically to maybe better do that? An interesting one about using the bin as advertising space. Sell that green bins, the size of our green bins that we put out every month, every week, as advertising space to local businesses. You know, maybe that's a, a way to generate some revenue. Pick up less frequently, except for the summer months. How do we partner with, you know, either McCaffrey's or other towns? Credits on tax bills, splitting a bin with your neighbor, having drop off sites, instead of having, instead of having, having your, 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 your compost or your food waste be picked up, how about we drop it off if we had like five gallon buckets that we could drop off in our, in our, in our neighborhoods? And there was definitely a request for more transparency on the numbers. So how much do things really cost and why should this all matter? So let me hand this over here to Molly.
All right, so over here, we were talking about the process, so looking at both the, the pickup and then kind of the value of the end of the product. And a couple of the exciting ideas that I had, that came up that we haven't discussed or I haven't been in discussion before about, we're thinking about, and first time that you sign up for the program, that you have to drop off your material at a location and you have an orientation of sorts. So you know, that first time is you're getting used to it. If you have any questions, there would be someone there to help answer your questions, look through your bucket, make sure you're doing things well. So that was an interesting idea. There's also talk about some form of a, a block captain or something to make sure things were, if you had questions, discussion about only having it be food waste, the importance of getting kids into the mix, which they are a bit now, stickers. So that came up again and again. I think clarity on communication, clarity on instruction. That definitely was reiterated time and again. And then let's see, on the back end, we, there was a bit of talk about the value of the end product and how we can kind of come full circle and, and be, be more consistent on our communication to make sure, one, that people get that in compost or the organic material that results, and then looking at how people in the program are consistently communicated with. So I think those were, those were some of the top, top options.
The other thing, sorry, the other thing that this group talked about again and again was enforcement. So for people who contaminate, what are the consequences and, and what role does enforcement play in education?
All right, so the group back here was talking about behavior and just want to piggyback off a lot of the ideas that came out of Molly's group. We also talked about enforcement, although there was the idea that enforcement is negative and we should be using carrots more than sticks. So if there could be a different word for enforcement such as education. Someone else brought up the point that people are in the program because they want to be in the program and that oftentimes people are maybe not doing it right, not because they're trying to do something bad, but they just don't know. So there was a big focus on education. Every group that was here said, why don't we use the kids to teach us how to do it right? And you know, a lot of questions about can we be working better with the schools to have education at the schools and have that mirror the same rules that we have to follow at home. There was a lot of talk about how just the rules are confusing. So having an orientation packet, having something that goes out every year when people sign up, like a flyer that's well designed, that people can put above their food waste bins, so it tells you clearly what can go in and what can't go in. Then also having like a complete list up on the website. And just some of the discussion showed how it's confusing and there's so many different items you can talk about. Somebody was wondering if the sleeve inside the cereal box was, could go in or not. So I think that is going to take some more thought about how do we try to put up every single possible item and let people know if it can go in or not. Let's see, there was, yeah, I think just a, a desire to get more information out in terms of motivation as well. And can we share information with participants about where trash is going and also where food waste is going and what impact people are having in the community and people can see if we're tracking our metrics, what impact we're having, and that can be a motivating factor too.
All right, thank you. All right, so time for a Q and A. So I guess, Bob, how do you want to do this?
Before that, a few of the things that I heard, I just wanted to comment on so that people know, you know, some thoughts that we, we have already internally been talking about. I can tell you that next week, the mayor, the administrator and myself are meeting with Lawrence to talk about the, the programs and problems we're having, problems they're having, and how maybe we can solve them together or, you know, combine some of the, you know, combine some of these collections in an, in an effort of streamlining and, and saving some, some money. Who knows what will happen, but we are, it is something that we are looking at. Drop off points, we have, we have also talked about that. I can tell you that a contingent from Avalon, the new development, they have approached me several times about, we want to be in the program, but where can we take the stuff? And currently, there isn't something. So it is something we are thinking about is, in the future, is, is drop off points. And we've had that also, some people live in many multifamily, many multifamily buildings where they don't want, or they, they can't have containers, or you know, whoever runs the, the building doesn't want containers there, you know, as far as having a drop off point. Frequency is another one that we've talked about. It's one thing to have, to cut down on your frequency when it's zero degrees out, but it's another thing when it's 100 degrees out in the summer. But we have had those conversations that it is another component that we're looking at, is should we have some sort of change in, in our, the frequency of the collections? Behavior, somebody, I was talking to somebody, and the education is huge and, you know, one of the things we found out this summer, as crazy as it may sound, was education right within your own four walls. The person who signed up is abiding by the program and is doing everything. You know what they forgot to do is tell their teenage, college age students who came home from college how to participate in the program. And guess what? They don't know a green bin from a blue bin, from a black bin, from the recycling bin. And they, stuff goes everywhere. And that was one of the things we found out over the summer is that you signed up and your wall for the program, there's only one problem, you forgot to tell your kids how to do it. So it's something else that we are very aware of is if it's from the education. And the enforcement is one of the other things Jeff and I in particular have talked about, whether it comes out of Public Works, Health Department, where, where does that enforcement come from? We've talked about, should it be the vendor? Should he enforce it? They want nothing to do with it unless you're going to pay them for it. So you know, it is something that we have also talked about. So as, it was interesting that those are some of the highlights that were talked about. And internally, I can tell you, we, we have started to discuss some of the same ones in trying to figure out how to do them and keep the program affordable.
All right, well, let's get started. So go ahead.
So Bob did answer a lot of my questions just now. Thanks very much. So my question, so what did you do with the insert to your box? I mean, I said no, and my neighbor here said they have the best compostable. So I mean, I said, I didn't ask the question, but like.
Yeah, it is.
We have two different answers to that.
Right, well, generally, the insert to the, to the cereal box is plastic, so it's not compostable.
Yeah. So there's stickers on the proof. I'm filling all of those stickers.
Until recently, they've always been non-compostable, but I've been recently been told they're now making a line of compostable ones, but if you don't know for certain, you gotta throw it away.
So these are the kinds of, like, really intricate details that have to get on one.
You're absolutely right.
That clip.
You're absolutely right. Thank you, yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the question was, the question was, is there a reason why the facility that takes our leaf and brush can't be used as the food, food waste facility?
Currently, that is, that's a joint facility with us and Lawrence. Lauren, it's in Lawrence. Lawrence handles all of our permitting for that, their public arts director and myself. Currently, the permits for that are not, do not include food waste. There is a cost associated with it, but the bigger problem right now is that facility, we are running almost that capacity. It's almost maxed out yearly. Unfortunately, Mother Nature, as you know, has been very cruel to us the last few years and between brush leaves, trees, et cetera, that's, it's maxed out. So we would have to make a business decision to remove that material in order to do food waste there because such a volume is, is being taken there. By the time we get to the middle of fall, that thing's maxed. There's no more space.
I saw a question up here.
Thanks. I actually have an answer to your cereal bag. As I understand it, you can take those sorts of plastics to McCaffrey's and there recycle the plastic bag thing. Thanks.
That was a better answer, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Other questions?
First of all, thank you for the mayor and the council to organize this and discuss this issue. I think we talked a lot of ideas, which are wonderful, but I also like to discuss one thing that what the, what we can do as individuals. Actually, I went over to 139 North Harrison Street and some, somebody in that family, they're already composting right in their front yard. I will really encourage you to go there and take a look at and see what we can do as individuals. And secondly, I also had a chance to go to Princeton University, like their digester. I learned quite a bit and I say she, it works, but I think we can make it better. So I have some ideas that I discussed with Princeton University, Regina, who's sitting here. And instead of using a tent that they have, we can use a greenhouse. Instead of using electricity, we can use the solar energy so we can be sustainable. And I'm also kind of, I asked the mayor and the council to look into some of the facility we have it in town, some of the public places that where we can use these kind of digestors, I mean, that food digester that Princeton University has are similar. I'm not proposing exactly the same. There are quite a few online that you can all take a look at it and we can evaluate the technology which works better, which doesn't work, and so and so forth. So what I'm really like here at the council to be really very proactive and look at from a holistic perspective, what we can do right here in town, instead of sending all this waste to either Pennsylvania or Delaware and so and so forth. And I have highlighted that in my presentation, some of those ideas. And I'm sorry, I didn't have 100 or 200 copies, but I will definitely be share this with the council and with the mayor and anybody who wants it, I'm sure we can make it happen. But most important thing, we have been very proactive. I think Princeton has a great capability of coming with the ideas. Anytime we have a problem, we have to solve it together. And I think we have to stay proactive and work together and we will come up with a great solution, that not only for Princeton, but I think we will be a model for New Jersey. And we understand, you know, we are falling behind, but we got a lot of talent here that we can help you to use it. So anyhow, so, so those are the kind of things that, you know, I couldn't talk to everybody in every group. I wanted to share that, yes, there are people who do independent analysis and research and so and so forth. I had a time to do it this week and I did make a presentation. I thought I'll make it so everybody could see it, but there was a different form, but message is please keep working together so we can solve these problems together. So that's kind of the comment I wanted to make, so.
Thank you.
I just had a question for the group. I don't know if this was discussed at any of the, any of the areas, but right now, the food waste is becoming compost. And how important is that to everybody? Because there's other things that you can do with food waste that aren't throwing it in the trash. You know, there's some towns that take the food waste and turn it into energy. And I'm just curious, how important is it that it becomes compost?
It's a great question. Maybe just do that through a show of hands, right? So if, if, if our food waste is being used as part of kind of a biogas solution, instead of going to compost, how many people would be okay with that? You're, you're absolutely right. You're, my apologies, because I, I'm, I'm asking the question knowing what I know about biogas. So maybe it's too, it's too big of a question for right now. Yeah. Right, but, but, but to the mayor's point, there are, there's more than just compost that this can become. It can become compost teas, it can become a, a fuel for, that can be burnt, you know, you can create energy. There's quite a few different things that, that can be, you can create biochar from it. And so I think maybe what we can do is do some type of a survey with some, bit of an educational piece on each of them and then, and ask folks. It's a good point. Yes?
It was just, this is a question around, you know, for the people who are participating in the program, obviously, right now, we're in a pause, so, but a way to be able to educate the people on what they can do now between when another program might be able to start up. So as an example, I did my own research about what type of composters that I could have at home. I decided on having a food digester, which isn't technically a composter, but if we were able to do that as a community, we might have been able to benefit from maybe a combined discount if we all, you know, did a bulk type of order. I think that might be something, you know, is the committee or anybody looking at like, hey, giving the people who have signed up for their program information about what they can do now in lieu of not having a program?
Great question. So I know that Sustainable Princeton did send out some information, I think to, was everyone in the program or?
Sustainable Princeton.
To, to, okay, to folks on the Sustainable Princeton email distribution list. What's that? But we, but we will send that out. There was a list of things. I know some people say you can't start a compost pile in the winter. You can, it's a little harder, but there are some things you can do. You can do a, you can, you can create, you can do vermicomposting in a five gallon bucket. You can do Bukashi method, which is a fermentation. There are some things you can do and we will, and Jenny?
I can get chickens.
You can get chickens. Chickens do, actually, a few of us saw some chickens eating compost earlier today. So you can definitely do that as well.
Matt, I just wanted to add the point of clarity, just because this was brought up to me. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that it is the municipality of Princeton that runs the curbside organics program or has been running it. Sustainable Princeton, the nonprofit, is very supportive of the program. We help kind of push it out and market it, but they are the mechanics behind the entire program. So just want to make sure there was clarity. I see there's a question right here.
Two questions. One question and one suggestion. The question is, we have green bins. What are we going to do with them now? And I have a suggestion. Part A is, they're perfectly useful as garbage bins. And I'd rather that they be used somehow rather than not at all. But they're also, part B, particularly useful for organic waste, because that's what we've been using them for all along. So why not continue to use them for organic waste? Put them out on the curb if we have no other solution in mind, and I don't see any consensus emerging immediately from this meeting, but as a stopgap measure, put them out the way we always used to. And if they go into the regular garbage, that's better than nothing at all and we're still using the green bins.
Bob, you may want to take the one about what do you do with the bins? Because we're not picking them up.
The bins are ours, yours. They are not, they, they are not central Jersey's as part of, when the contract, every bin that delivered is not going back to central Jersey, so they will not be coming around to pick them up. At this point in time, we're asking people to hang on to them. I will tell you that we did have somebody call up the other day and said, I don't want the bin, come get it. We did, went and got it for them. But we do ask you to hang on to it because we 100% expect to be back. So I ask you to do that. One thing is, do not put it out on Wednesdays. It will not get collected. They are not coming on Wednesdays. They did not come today, they're not coming next week. If you do put it out with your regular, with your trash, it's sort of ironic, but after years and years of trying years and years of trying to get them to pick them up and having them miss the bins, they, the other day, we had people who did do just that, Roger, they put them out as trash bins and the garbage guys came by and didn't collect them. And when I called Central Jersey, the guy from the truck, his answer was, "Well, they're the green bins, nobody, we're not, we don't pick them up." You know, and the word unfortunately internally there never got down to those guys that, you know, if you see a green bin, pick it up. So, I will tell you that if it is out there on your normal trash day, they are to pick it up. I would use it as a second bin or supplemental bin. I wouldn't put it out there by itself. At this point, unfortunately, we're still teaching the dog the new tricks, but, you know, they certainly can be, there's no reason why they can't be used to put your garbage out on your garbage day. But please, don't put them out on Wednesday. Nobody's coming to get them.
Perry, did you have, oh, oh, sorry.
Dorothy Mullin. The values of institutions are reflected in their requirements. And I'm looking for the people who have the discretion to make requirements. I'll give an example. In 2001, a couple of weeks after 9/11, I had a very strong passion to do a community service project. I went to Borough Council. I didn't know Roger Martindell at the time and he couldn't get me on the agenda, but he had an idea. And he said, "Why don't you go to the public school system and see if you can reproduce your organic garden in a public space?" And I said, "Well, who has the discretion to approve this immediately?" And the answer came as soon as I asked the right question. It was Bill Cirillo, the principal of Riverside School. In 30 seconds, I had my answer, yes. It set us on a path and for the next 13 years, I ran a program which became, because of help throughout the district, just the premier school gardening program in the state of New Jersey. And we were writing curriculum that was used all over the country. But it started because one man had the discretion at a very local, small level to say, "Yes, I'm going to require that people do this." And after 13 years of running that program, I can tell you with no doubt in my mind that first graders can be taught in under an hour to distinguish compost from recycling from garbage and go home and tell their parents how to do it.
Well said.
Can you talk a little bit about, like, the whole thing of, like, you know, soiled pizza boxes and, like, soiled paper plates and stuff? Because everybody's been kind of talking about food waste, but being able to throw that stuff in the composting bins is really good for reducing what goes in the garbage.
I'm going to let Pyro answer that as part of the New Jersey Compost Council.
Yeah, that could be included in the original question of contaminants, right? Or it can't. Subject to the processor, you should be able to accept carons, they're tainted, because once, once the caron gets the pizza sauce in it, it really cannot get sent into a mill for recycling, but it goes into the pile or to the window. So, subject to the processor. If the processor has a facility that can screen and process caron, paper towels and so forth, yes, it is part of the organic because paper is considered organic and so is paper towels, wet and so forth. And then to the original question of the contaminants, that some of the fruits have stickers and, I mean, contaminants are going to go. You're going to get probably 95%, but most facilities will have pre-screening equipment that will do separation, additional separation of contaminants. Because contaminants are not just physical contaminants, contaminants also include pathogens. So, these facilities who are in the marketplace, selling their final product, they're screening and they know, particularly digestors, when you're dealing with pure digester operations, they're very, very scrutinizing these contaminants that sometimes go. So, you guys, through your course and your culture, the stats have shown that you will never achieve 100%. There'll be contaminants going to that facility. That facility must provide, your contract should be included, that they should be able to have these new special German-designed machines that are now arriving in North America, which I just saw in Phoenix, Arizona, that will do the separation of the contaminants and/or accept. So, it really is how you structure your contract. Normally, because it's food waste out of households, which is the worst-case scenario because it's coming from every possible source. So, we don't know. This is, this is a very volatile situation, like all organics operations. So, there, everybody has to participate. You guys have the main source of separation at the source, but then the hauler does some, but mostly at the end. So, yes, for the carons and yes, for the contaminants, your facility should provide you some help in that end.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I think the things that, as Bob mentioned earlier, because where our product was going changed over the last 18 months, one farm would say, "Yes, we can take a pizza box." The next farm, maybe not. And so, it's the value of a long-term contract when you can kind of lay out those requirements. Steve?
I'd like to encourage everybody to try composting at home. It's very enjoyable, but very easy. Actually, there's no work involved. You don't have to turn them, at least I don't, and I put paper in there, it works fine. But I did want to say that Bob Huff and Matt and I, and we worked for a year to come up with a proposal to have roll carts a little larger than the green ones be incorporated into the composting, the yard waste bag collection. There's one truck in Princeton, I believe, Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, that chugs around town, very efficiently picking up these yard waste bags of yard waste. And so, but in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and Durham, North Carolina, other, other places similar to here, they have large roll carts and a little tipper hook on the back of the truck so that people can put, containerize more of their yard waste and not dump it on the street. And as Bob Huff mentioned just now, that the recycling center, the composting center is filled to the max, this might be a way to slowly shift people to containerizing yard waste, maybe composting more at home, reducing the amount of yard waste headed towards the recycling facility there in Lawrence and possibly make some room for the food waste to be incorporated in as years come along here. So, I just wanted to suggest, actually, with the green bins, one use would be for people to use those instead of a leaf bag, instead of a yard waste bag, and you'd get a, spend $5,000 on a tipper hook for that truck and chug around and be able to pick up yard waste in those green bins and hopefully get larger bins that people could use as well for that service. And it's, it's no extra collection, it's already a collection that's being done for the yard waste bags. So, I see this as all connected, the yard waste, the food waste, even the sludge which is being incinerated. Currently, $250,000 of natural gas is being used to incinerate our sludge out there at River Road. So, that's something people don't know about. So, all this stuff is potential fertilizer, it's good stuff, and, and I hope we can think global, you know, a larger, think large, more expansively about this and try to solve multiple problems. Thank you.
All right, we're going to do last two questions and then wrap it up. Any, or maybe no more questions? Anyone else? Questions? Questions? Okay, well, if not, then let me real quick, just kind of next steps over the next, kind of, over the next 90 days. I know people are asking, so what's, what's coming up next? So, identify our short and long-term past. So, folks are definitely wondering, what can I do right now? And we'll set, we'll make sure we get that list out to folks. And what I would suggest is if you have some, if you have other ideas, if what you see on that list, you know, if you've got ideas outside of what's on that list, let us know either through Sustainable Princeton or back through where the email comes from. And we'll get that back out to, you know, the whole group. We've got to kind of screen the options. I think Bernie used to say, or, I'm telling Bernie, he used to say, "Scrub it out." So, we'll take a look at all those options and figure out what might be some of the best ones for us as a community. We're going to engage with the state through the DEP, through the governor's office, with the help of NJCC. We need the perspective from the governing bodies. So, to, you know, to Dorothy's, you know, point, you know, who can make the decision? And, you know, let's, you know, what kind of requirements need to happen, if any, to make this work? If we go back out to bid, the state law requires that there's a 60-day bid period for the material. So, if you're thinking that, okay, sometime in the next, you know, month or two, we'll be back to collecting, you know, in the green bin, it probably won't be the case because of the bid process that the state mandates. That doesn't necessarily mean we can't come up with a short-term op, a short-term option, but in terms of getting that green bin back out, rolling out to, you know, once a week, probably is going to take a few months. Some financial clarity, we definitely talked about that in terms of, you know, looking at holistically, as Steve mentioned, and making sure we have the right committees kind of looking at as well. And definitely want to make sure everyone here is being updated along the way. We don't want to come back four months from now and say, "Oh, here's the answer," because we know that, we all know that in this town, that won't fly. So, we are, you know, want to make sure that we're keeping folks up to date, getting your input and, you know, hopefully have a solution here shortly that most of us, and maybe even all of us, think is a, is a great solution. So, with that, I'm just going to see if Bob or the mayor or anyone from council has any last-minute words.
One quick thing, as far as the communication, I assume that the reason you're all here is because you did get emails from us, but it's quite possible that you didn't and your neighbor told you or whatnot. Couple of easy things you can do. You can get on to the municipal website and go to Access Princeton and send them your email and they will then help you get into our mailing list. You can look under the Public Works page on the website and find my email and send me an email and I will get you into the right bucket, so to speak, so that you get emails regarding this program. You can call my office and ask for me and leave me a message and we'll get you on it. But certainly, what we do know that there is some problems with the list in the sense that people's emails have typos in them. Unfortunately, people put their email in it and we just copied it. But there are some people with email issues that are getting it. Or if you signed up directly in our office by walking up, you may not have given us an email. And us, we don't have it. But we have found that we've, we've got a list of about over 700, 750 names on it that we believe have correct emails. So, if you think you're wrong, if you didn't get it, please get ahold of us so that we can get you on the list so that you can get the updates. I know, speaking with the mayor, we're going to try and, you know, as we plug along here, try to put out updates every couple of weeks. And I know she's also putting updates in her newsletter to keep everybody informed as far as what's going on. So, it is a critical part of our program over the coming months to stay in touch with you.
All right, thank you again, everyone, for coming today. Thank you again to the mayor and council for, for having this meeting and hope to see you all again soon. Thanks.[1781.73]